We will have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Be pit, and we did. Good morning, it is November sixteenth, it is ten o'clock, and I call this meeting in order. All three county commissioners are here. We will now move to county administrator with consents and approvals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have nineteen exonerations for twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents, minutes for November the ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and also for the Board of Assessment Appeals for October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Vouchers, General County Fund, four hundred and twenty-one thousand five fifty-five eight. Cole Severance, six thousand three seventy-two sixty-seven. Chestnut Ridge Park, thirteen thousand three twenty-six forty-nine. Camp Monthly, five thousand nine seventy-four forty-eight. Mason Dixon Park, one thousand eight seventy-six eighteen. Mon County Center, six thousand five ninety seventy-one. Transportation Levy, one hundred thirty-three thousand seven 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 and ninety-seven cents. Recreation Levy, one thousand one sixty-nine. Library Levy, thirty-two thousand eight thirty-five sixty-five. Cecil's Valuation, one thirty-five eleven. Dave Report Center, seventy-four thousand one seventy-three forty. ARPA, sixty thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. Parks and Recreation, seventeen thousand one forty-six eighty-nine. Purchasing Card Vouchers, General County, seventeen thousand seven oh seven ninety-four. Nine One One, four twenty-three seventy-three. Home Compliance, five thousand three thirty-six fifty-eight. Chestnut Ridge Park, five thousand nine eleven twenty-six. Camp Monthly, three hundred and sixty dollars. Mason Dixon Park, two sixty-nine sixty-six. Cecil's Valuation, seven oh four, for a voucher total of eight oh six four sixty-eight eleven. Position vacancies for board and authorities are listed on the website and fiduciary orders for November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Puff moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay. Introduction of new employees personnel. Want to come on down?
Good morning.
Morning.
Sheriff's behalf, I'd like to introduce you to two employees that he has hired. The first one is John Rankin, on the far right. He is going to be a transport officer, effective start date of today. John was a former security officer at UPMC in Pittsburgh, so we're happy to have him. Second is Aaron Kohler. Her start date as a deputy sheriff would be December the first. She is an eight-year employee of WVU Police Department, and so we're ready to have her on board as well. She's already certified and ready to go.
Excellent.
Move to approve personnel as presented.
Second.
Puff moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you, and hopefully you're not going to be too busy.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Where are you on numbers now, with adding this deputy?
I think in the neighborhood of maybe four vacancies, deputy sheriff.
Just down four, that's good.
It's better than nine.
We have three that are scheduled and accepted to go to the academy in January that have previously been hired, so we're just waiting to get them in.
Good.
Well, congratulations, welcome to the county.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay. At this time, we will have comments from the public. We're requesting that you keep your comments to three to four minutes, because we have a very large meeting today and this afternoon. So if you'd like to come, state your name, address, and feel free. Hi, Jason.
Hi, my name is Jason. I have no address for, it was taken away from me when I was unlawfully incarcerated. Allow me to recap my past three speeches. First pointed out that ignorance is, although to error, is excusable. Forgive them, for they know not what they do. Second, a fool is one who knows the truth and chooses to continue in error. My third speech, I admitted that the power you have can stop me, but I questioned if you can stop a thousand that come to know the truth. Again, I call for the impeachment of the sheriff of Montague County, for he continues in a manner contrary to the truth. This is suffering the people. The power given to you is from God. God only gives good things. Man has found a way to pervert what has been given, and like all things, can be used for good or evil. It is written, "For those who do good, fear not the sword." I do that which is written according to the scriptures, given by God, for it is good. When the sneaky IRS enticed men of God to establish a church, and in order to receive a 501(c)(3) status, those men had to agree not to endorse any political candidates. This limited the speech of the church. It was not seen as a hindrance at the time, now I see it as the control over the church. There's only one problem with that. For it is written that the name, one of many, given to the Lord Jesus Christ, has been given to the ecclesia. The ecclesia is the set apart followers of Jesus Christ, the church, according to scripture. As the church carries his name, Lord our righteousness, and his name is above all names, I ask, how is it possible to limit the speech of the ecclesia? Forgive me for answering my own question, it is not. See, there are many ways that evil will continue. Desires of the flesh, lusts of the eyes, and the pride of life. All these things are contrary to the truth. For those who follow in the lies of them will lead to death and destruction. Those who follow in the way of truth, for them will be life and life abundant. You have not seen the ecclesia in action, you have only seen a remnant, holding fast for a time as the present. Others, knowing the truth, have been suppressed by fear. When the fear is removed, those people who know the truth will no longer be suppressed. For it is written, "The truth shall make you free." Allow me to show you some differences between legal and lawful. First, one may think that if one is legal, they then... If one is not legal, then one is doing something illegal. One cannot do something illegal if one is not first legal. That's concept, anyway. The elderly can be scammed out of millions every year, because scamming, although wrong, in many ways, it's legal. They agree to the terms. Parents can, I'm sorry.
You have thirty more seconds.
Thirty more seconds, okay, well, get to a point, I don't know. I mean, everything's a point. The ecclesia is and cannot be legal, it never has been. If anyone would like to copy my speech, we'd have to give it to them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public portion?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. I live, my name's Taren Moser, I live at one ninety-three Paradise Circle, Morgantown. I just wanted to bring attention to US-119 heading from the Walmart intersection south to the Gladesville-Hallack Road intersection. Not only is there a increasing amount of speed on this road, there is only two lanes on this road, any accidents happen, the road shuts down. We also have a school on this road, it's actually on Gladesville Road, but the intersection of Goshen and one nineteen is very dangerous. Within the last couple of weeks, we've also had a death of a hit-and-run. There's more and more pedestrians and bicyclists that are on this road that are trying to get to work, get into town, get to different various running errands, things like that. So I just wanted to bring attention especially to the school intersection, it's a very dangerous intersection. I did see a couple signs, more signs put up. Nobody abides by this. We did have a couple deputies out there try to enforce speed limits. That lasted for a couple of weeks, but no one abides by these speed limits, it's very dangerous. It's very dangerous just getting in and out of that intersection. So I'd like to just call your attention to these areas and these safety concerns in that area of the county. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Jamie Summerlin, two oh nine, Kingwood. Figured I'd just echo the sentiments since it was brought up of the roads. So my wife and I went out to Christmas at the barn out in Preston County a couple of weeks ago, made our way back. The company that ended up doing the paving coming from Kingwood into Saberton did an amazing job. It's absolutely phenomenal, until you hit right outside of Morgantown. And whenever where they stopped and continue into downtown, some of you may have seen the video that I posted a few months ago of bouncing into Morgantown from Brockway around the Hogback Turn and coming through there. And then I also sent a note over to Commissioner Bloom earlier this week, or actually last week, about the pothole that's forming out on South Walnut Street Bridge that has gotten even bigger now and has got rebar showing on it as well. So that hasn't been addressed yet, but I certainly wanted to bring it to the attention here of the commission. Certainly would love to see some of these things taken care of. It's a gateway into town, we want to promote things going on down here, but when you have to bounce into downtown, it makes it, you know, pretty difficult to shine the way that we should over, especially in the Greymont area, making our way into downtown Morgantown. So certainly just wanted to bring it publicly to your attention. If we could get anything done, I know there's state roads, I understand going through town, you know, it's, the downtown streets are horrible, but if we could get DOH to address some of those things, it would certainly make a difference in those that are trying to make the downtown area much better, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, honored commissioners. My name is James Julie Annie, I live at two five six Prairie Avenue, first ward, city of Morgantown. I'd like to let you all folks know that I will be running for city council. I've grown up here, I've been invested in Morgantown, my family's been invested in Morgantown. We feel very fortunate that we've been able to make our livelihoods here. And we all like to try to give back in some way, and I feel I'm at a point in my life that I'm able to give back. I'm no longer attached to my businesses that way, they're run by basically other folks. That being said, I really have the time to try to bring us all together. We're at a point in all our, in Morgantown, West Virginia University and the county. Somehow, we have to bring all our wants and needs together. Somehow, we have to do that. West Virginia University, I made my livelihood through West Virginia University. That's how I did it. I created a service business, providing housing for students, a very important business. And that being said, I understand about relationships and not having relationships, and who the stakeholders are. Well, guess what? WVU is Land Grant University in the state of West Virginia. And West Virginia University's athletics is our professional sports team, meaning the whole state, meaning the whole country. But where I'm at, and where you're at, and what's so important to us, is the growth, or lack of growth, or the positioning of where West Virginia University is going to be in our community moving forward. West Virginia University, not WVU Madison, but West Virginia University. Right now, we're in a situation, we've lost over six thousand students. I'd like anybody to challenge that. On campus, we may have even less students than that. But here's what I can tell you folks. The city of Morgantown is smaller now than it was ten years ago, five years ago, and today, we're getting smaller. That being said, every time a property gets taken off the tax rolls in the city of Morgantown, we become smaller. Now whether we did certain things to create our own areas in the city of Morgantown, in a sense, to create our own bed and lay in it, but here's what I'm going to tell you about the city of Morgantown, okay? Where I reside, and I grew up in Westover, so I understand, I strongly want Granville and Westover to grow, and they're doing good things, but we all have to grow. So that being said, when it came to the Ruby Center, okay, that we all have worked hard to do and do, and we've worked together to do those certain things. The city of Morgantown annexed, if I'm correct, annexed Ruby Inn, meaning they're saying, we're going to provide fire service, we're going to provide police service, we're going to do those things. We're going to have zoning, we're going to do certain things, but the fact of the matter is, is that it's a nonprofit, meaning that the city of Morgantown doesn't benefit from a large tax base that's going to come from this investment in people. This is an investment in people, okay? So what I'm saying is, we all have to come together. We have the largest and greatest resource in West Virginia University, they have an incubator. They promote themselves here and there. Here's what I'm suggesting to us, please, let's all work together. Let's bring West Virginia University in as a stakeholder to the city, to the county, to the other cities, and let's do this all together. That's my speech on that. One thing on the other, talked to Sean just briefly before the meeting, thank you. And that being said, I was at the council meeting last night, and they're talking about the warming center, the place for people to go whenever it's inclement weather and things like that. We're at the same place again, and I heard the same thing about, here we're into November, it's cold. So what I suggested is this, whatever funds you guys will graciously give for this, that's great, and we need it this year, now. But that being said, whatever's set up now has to evolve into next year, meaning that we create this fund, probably through the United Way, meaning separate from our general fund, but creating it. So what I'm even saying today, there's a gap, and I'm not sure what the gap is. But we have a great organization in MAP. And Mrs. Loomis was downtown last night speaking, she spoke elegantly about small businesses, about big businesses. Thirty-eight percent of our businesses that are involved with MAP are small businesses. That's kind of a weird kind of thing, usually you think at eighty, eighty-five percent of your businesses are small businesses. Somehow, we're not getting to the small business, but we have the larger business, that's good, that's great. But the fact of the is, I'm here today to ask, I'm asking this community to step forward, okay? I'm asking the members of MAP, who I'm sure have been able to generously give to elections, generously give to candidates, I'm asking for them to give to our community, and I'll start with the first check of one thousand dollars to fill the gap between what they have for the warming shelters and what we need for the warming shelters this year. Now, if we have our goal of, I think it was ninety thousand dollars, that's what we do. If we only spend forty thousand dollars, we roll it over. I'm done, thank you guys for giving me a little extra time.
You're quite welcome.
But this is for the community, we can't be short on the community, we cannot be short on the community. We can't cut people off from trying to do the best for the community. And guess what? We've got a lot of people, yourself, all you folks, working hard to do it. I saw Janet Lewis at the meeting in Morgantown. She'll have the same thing to you, she was so emotional and so this, that we need to do this, we've got to do this, and we do have to do this as a community. I started with Reverend John Sonna Day, back in the day, let's do it, thank you.
Thank you very much. I do like your sweatshirt, though, I do.
Got it, brother.
I really like that, I can relate to that. I relate to that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, we will close the public portion. We will now have a proclamation, GIS Day, come on down. One of those, Trace, right, we have all three of you, good.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I brought backup this morning.
That's, that's...
Yeah, yeah. Mike Paul, I'm the GIS coordinator here at Montague County, and I'll let you guys introduce yourselves.
I'm Taren Moser, Morgantown Utility Board.
Marvin Davis, city of Morgantown.
Today is GIS Day across not only our country, but the globe. So we really appreciate you guys recognizing GIS Day here in Montague County and everything, you know, that we have done up until today with our GIS technology, our mapping infrastructure that we've created. So I can read the proclamation and give you a brief update of what we've done, or...
If you would read the proclamation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Then, yeah.
Well, the proclamation today, "Whereas Montague County recognizes that an understanding, use and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout Montague County, and whereas geographic information systems technology allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond, and whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential, and whereas Montague County acknowledges those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve the lives of our citizens, and whereas to recognize and support the efforts of nonprofits who work on activities to improve conservation, human services, and various humanitarian efforts to better our world, and whereas having a day of GIS activities open to students, citizens, and government leaders will help promote STEM education and inspire others to a higher calling to use technology for good, and whereas Montague County is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better serve its residents to make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. Now therefore, we, the Montague County Commission, do hereby proclaim November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two as GIS Day. And Montague County encourage each individual to join in recognition of the value and application of this technology dated the sixteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-two."
Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Puff moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, I really appreciate it, commissioners. Again, since, you know, we have really started to grow, and the approval of MAGIC, our Montague, Morgantown-area geospatial information consortium, it's been a very nice, full-on year of, you know, getting together and really starting the cost sharing and data sharing that we implemented with adopting that collaborative GIS group in two thousand and twenty-one, fall of two thousand and twenty-one. So literally a full year since our creation, I guess you could say. So we, this year, we really, was our first year working together with the imagery of cost sharing, data sharing project, along with the LiDAR project that we did here encompassing not only a large swath of Montague County, but the city of Morgantown and MUB's greater footprint. So that was one of our biggest collaborative efforts this year through the MAGIC. Our broadband mapping application that we have, you know, worked in our study, working directly with our contractors with the broadband initiative, and creating a Montague County-specific mapping application, I think I sent out to you guys, that we're still working on. So when it comes time to look at those certain rings and everything, we'll be able to look at that information that's provided in those certain rings and see what we can better, the decisions we can make from there. Working directly with our county clerk, Mrs. Blaney, working with the redistricting lines and using the different applications GIS has given us to the senatorial and magistrateal lines back, I think it was last November?
All of them.
Yeah, all of them, really. But, yeah, so that was very beneficial, obviously, in this past election, getting all the proper precincts and lines matched up. And of course, the launch of our GIS Magic Hub site that is going to be here very soon. We got together a website specifically for MAGIC and the information and the data that we provide specifically for people out there. And then one of the ones that more rings specifically for Montague County, as in my department and Montague County Commission, is we were published in the NACO mapping book this year for ESRI. So that was very exciting, and that was a nice recognition to have. So again, if anybody would like to, if you want to give a brief update, or you guys good? Other than that, I really, you know, really appreciate your support and anything you want to add.
Sean, if you want to add.
No, thank you for all you've done, Mike, Taren, Marvin. Get ready, we'll be using you a lot in this, as we roll out more of the broadband information. And one of the things the public needs to understand is, as we're working on these rings, we're dealing with a lot of NDAs and information that is sensitive. That's why we, we have to try to figure out a way that we can inform the public as far as where, like, maybe connection points will be, but also looking at critical infrastructure in terms of security, and not really being able to, you know, what we can publish and what we can't. But we'll work that out, and again, we'll be utilizing you as tools to inform the public. So appreciate all you guys are doing.
Fantastic, look forward, yep.
Thank you. Appreciate your call, cooperation together. Okay, thank you. At this time, we have Colleen Coon with some grants.
I have requests for reimbursement. The first one is for the Governor's Highway Safety Program, Save Communities, in the amount of eight hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. The next one is for Click It or Ticket, it's nine hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-six cents, and impaired driving, two thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Move to approve the president signing?
Second.
Puff moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
I don't have any.
Neither do I. Wow, that's a shock, okay. None of us have correspondence, no one finished business, new business. To consider for approval of sub, sub...
Subrecipient.
Thank you. Subrecipient agreement to facilitate the release of American Rescue Plan Act local fiscal recovery funds to the city of Westover for the Holland Avenue Gateway Project.
Move to approve the subrecipient agreement as presented.
Second.
Puff moving second, you just want to explain how much it is, or...
Well, this is what we agreed to last, last week, a hundred twenty-five thousand that we've put towards this project, and this is the, the agreement just formalizes that.
Okay.
Anything else you know?
Okay.
Just that it specifically covers the costs associated with the resident project representative as required for onsite oversight.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Consideration to prove a letter of support for the restoration and renovations to the Warner Theater Project by High School, Hotby High Street Holdings. And it's just a letter, yes.
Move to approve the letter of support as presented.
Second.
Puff moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of requisition number seventy-one for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Is for eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-one cents. These funds are the sales tax that was collected in the district in the month of October.
Move to approve the requisition seventy-one as presented.
Second.
Puff moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just to note that those amounts are less the hundred thousand dollar required reserve and the administrative fees that are taken out of that. And this year's collection so far is about fifteen percent over last year, so we're still trending up, it's still a little lower than our projections, so, but we're still keeping an eye on that.
Good. Okay, do we have any other new business?
Yeah.
Sean, yeah?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, do we have any reports from elected officials or department services? Looking over Granville, no? Okay. If not, we will move to reports from county commissioners, Jeff?
Just a couple. First, be remiss if I didn't wish my mother a happy birthday, so, happy birthday, Mom, if you're watching. Secondly, I'd like to just commend the High Street Holdings Group. We did a letter of support for their project at the Warner. These projects they're doing in downtown are, I think, vital to the survival of downtown, and they, they've already taken care of the beautiful facility, the apothecary room on the corner of Spruce and Pleasant, and now they're, they're working towards the Warner, which has been a blight, anyone would say, since it's been closed. I think we'd all like to see it come back to life, and the vision they have for that's pretty neat, so. And also a project I think we heard, did a letter of support for that they're looking forward to doing down along the river behind the brewing company for, I forget the exact project, but it's just kind of neat to see these things.
Sandwich secret society.
So they're not tearing down and making parking lots, they're trying to renovate and bring back, and I think that's vitally important to preserving the history and the use of downtown, and hopefully we can continue to support projects like that as they come up, so, that's all I've got.
Okay, thanks.
Since our last meeting, last Thursday, we had our partnership executive committee meeting, and then I had a very exciting Zoom meeting with Preston County. So Commissioner Stone and representatives from Prodigy were on the call with, along with our consultants to talk about how we can work together on our eastern end of our county, and if there's ways that we can synchronize and, and help, help cover our end of the, our eastern end of the county quicker. So it was very promising, I have a follow-up call with Tim Watchering from Prodigy, and I'm looking forward to areas where we can work together. And as we stated on the call, it's not, we're not really concerned about who provides the service. Obviously, we're going to do our due diligence as far as our citizens are concerned, but we want to get our citizens covered. So if we work with other counties and we bring, and we utilize their ISPs, then so be it. But we're looking in any and all ways to cover our citizens. After that, I had a development authority meeting, and then we had a quick call in prep for USA diving site discussion. The Veterans Day Parade was another success, thank you, Jamie, for all you did to help organize that. And I went from there to MHS's winter concert, which was at the Met. So a lot going on on High Street in downtown Morgantown. Friday was Veterans Day, hope everybody took time to thank those who have served us. Saturday, I had an interesting event, but I'm going to talk about that at the end. Sunday, Tom and I attended a luncheon with the site selection committee that was visiting here for the Olympic diving trials. And I think it went, it couldn't have went any better.
I agree.
So it's really down between us and Tennessee. They left here and went to Tennessee, and I hope they got bad weather. But I, you know, I think these people were genuine, they weren't really here to look at the facility. The facility is a facility, it's equal to the best out there. What they're really looking at is the community and the passion for having this event here, and the passion for increasing access. and the passion for increasing access to the sport, and I think they found a lot of that. So it was, it was a really good, really good luncheon. Monday, we had our canvassing. I want to thank our clerk. Another year of excellent election support in the audit that we did of the two counties. Again, I don't think we've ever had a discrepancy in my six years of doing canvassing between what the hand count and the official count, which says a lot for how this county runs, runs elections, and I believe that we'll probably have no, no calls for recount or anything like that, so I think we'll move forward with certifying those results next week. Last night, Commissioner Blum and I were at the YCF Grants Award Ceremony. Again, wonderful, wonderful organization, providing over a hundred forty-nine thousand to about twenty-nine different nonprofit entities supporting our citizens. So it was a really, really great event. And then I went from there to the Volunteer Fire Association meeting. They had their election of officers last night, and Bob Brookover, who had been the president for as long as I can remember, has kind of stepped aside, he wants to take a break, he's, you know, so they had elections and, but I want to thank Bob for all of his support, all of his support to the fire association. And Mickey Reinhardt will be the new president, and I look forward to working with Nikki closely, Mickey closely. Today's a normal day. At the end of the day, we have our MAP monthly board meeting, and then Business After Hours at Mylan Park. And if anybody's in the mall this afternoon, about five o'clock, the Morgantown High Percussion Group is doing a concert. I guess they'll be doing it in the Food Court area. I'm not, not really sure where they're doing it. They're doing it somewhere in the mall, so if you happen to be up the mall, stop by. And as I mentioned, Business After Hours will be at Mylan Park, the new addition to the Ruby Center. Tomorrow's Red Team, and then we got Leadership Mon, be presenting at Leadership Mon, and then at night, we have our MMPO meeting. Friday, we have staff reports, and I have my normal two-week broadband tag up. So I did want to comment on a couple things, Mr. Julian, in regards to your comments about the warming shelter. We are, the commission is, is doing our regular due diligence and looking at the proposal that was, the request that was sent to us, and we're actually having a meeting this afternoon. So the commission will certainly, you know, do our part to participate in that. Taryn, thank you for your concerns about 119, the last time you raised concerns. You did report back that there, there was an improvement. We'll, we'll relay your information to the Sheriff's Department and make sure that they keep an eye on that, that area, because I was out there in the last couple weeks, and you're right, it's, it's really, it's, it's a dangerous area, especially with the school out there, so we will relay that, that concern. Lastly, I would ask Beth Bossio to come up. Last Saturday, we had a special event where we went, well, Beth, I'll go ahead and let you.
Just to play it safe.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to suspend?
Yeah, I'd like to suspend the rules so Ms. Bossio can present something to the commission.
Proffin moving second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, now, thank you.
So the state Capitol complex was struggling, trying to find two large real trees to display at Christmas time. It's getting harder and harder for them, and they reached out to the West Virginia Christmas Tree Association, who we're a part of, as Christmas tree farmers, and asked if we had anything available. We did. The issue was, they were located in property in Morgantown next to power lines. In the state, the way they cut down trees, they use a boom lift, and they said, we can't cut these down. Thankfully, Commissioner Sakura saw John and I scratching our heads and said, how can I help? So Sean reached out to businessman Ron Lidle, who agreed to donate his time and services to cut down those trees. So I just want to bring it to everyone's attention that Mon County would not have those two trees down there if it wasn't for the Commissioner Sakura, Ron Lidle, and also Mountaineer Contractors, who donated their time and services to help us cut those down in the early hours of Saturday morning at 6:00 AM. It was a very small crew. Ron did it safely, nothing was damaged, the building, and a lot of people think the pictures out there are my stepdad, the Christmas tree farmer, but actually Sean came that morning to help, because we couldn't cut them down, because we start our harvest at our Christmas tree farm Saturday, and so our crew could not do it. So if it wasn't for Ron Lidle, Sean, and Mountaineer Contractors, our two trees would have never made it to the state. But because of Ron, cutting down the trees, only a little bit of the trees were left, and I created some swags from those clippings, and so I wanted a part of the Capitol trees to be here in Morgantown on display in our beautiful town, and be proud of the fact that trees grown in our town and businesses in our town helped make sure it, they got down there safely, and they're being set up. They were, one was set up on Monday, and one's being set up today, and we plan to attend the light-up night on December third.
Oh, great.
So, thank you so much, Sean and the commissioners and everybody.
The joyful night will be December third. Tom, if you're interested in maybe going down, right now, I'm not available, but if either of you wanted to go down and represent Mon County at the tree lighting?
I will be in Philadelphia.
Okay. Well, there's still a small chance that I can make it, because Jackie's changed, but I do appreciate Beth, I suggested, Beth offered the, the swag to the three commissioners, because what she, when Ron cut the trees, he, he only had to cut a little bit to get to the stump to actually cut it, and, you know, Beth, as thrifty as she is, she picked those up, and a couple hours later, she sent me pictures of these beautiful swags that she made, and she wanted to offer them to the commission, and then I suggested that she bring them and present them, and that we have them somehow on the courthouse.
Great.
On the courthouse for, for the season.
Do you have them with you?
Yes, I do.
I'd like, so we could share, so you could share it?
Go ahead and put them on the table?
Yeah. Why don't you put them on the table that way?
And Beth made it sound real easy, but this was a, you know, we had power lines, and we had a building.
Yes. It was, it was, Ron was very impressive, so if he needs another type of job.
He's good, he's good. You're going to hire him.
I wish other trees be cut down for the White House, and Ron did an amazing job. So I was very impressed.
They were completely laid down, not a branch armed, and.
Yeah, so that's why these are very little, because only one of my verintas were left. So I will leave these here for you guys, and thank you again.
And thank you for donating them. We will put them out.
Yeah. Thank you, Beth.
Why don't we have them out, especially, what was it, December sixth, or fifth? When is the?
Tree lighting is the fifth, I think.
Here, yeah. The fifth is the parade and so on and the like. Okay, good. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, that's all.
Really, a lot, just a lot of great things going on. This has been a very eventful week. It's democracy at its best when you can go to the election, you have changes in positions, and it's done through the process of people voting. So thanks to Carrie and all her staff who helped in the election process, and do really appreciate it. Couple things that were interesting, you mentioned 119 in Ridgedale. We had submitted, and I believe it was about twelve months ago, to DOH. The DOH said they were going to put a light in there. And then unfortunately, there was feedback by some individuals who did not want a light there, so we will find out where we are, because the commissioners are still adamant on putting a, a light where Ridgedale Elementary School. And then what we recommended was, it could be blinking, but then on during the time when the schools were there, which was a compromise. That's the last we had heard, but we will, we will check up on that. Jamie is right, I submitted to the DOH, the three individuals that I always do, at South Walnut Street, and unfortunately, I, I need to tell the county commissioners, that one of them came back saying that the person doesn't exist anymore, and I called down there. Mike Cronin, who was our district, is not there anymore.
Correct.
We did not know about that. So that's who I've been working with, so it came back, so we're going to try and find out who to get in contact with, but, yeah, it's.
And Mike, that's one of the, we, that came across a couple weeks ago, where Mike was moving on. I can't remember who, or I heard that.
Well, I, but we thought we would get a message from the DOH district of who it is, so we will find out, because Mike had been, I mean, a lot of people get mad at Mike, but Mike has been really helpful with us. I had submitted over ninety roads in a three-year period, and they did eighty-five of them. So he was very, you know, on top of it. I know, but still Dave McDonald and Tanya still got the message, so we will find out what's going on, but with the rebar out, that scares me, because I've seen what's happened to cars when they hit it, so hopefully we will get that information. Also, the, the county commission is always involved in many organizations and/or org, clubs and meetings, and I do want to say that yesterday, I went to a meeting, that's the, the Zero Homeless Group that Rachel Coen runs, and it was a very active discussion concerning exactly what James had brought up about the homeless and the warming shelter, the cold shelter, and I requested information that Colleen and Manetta gave, and I have in front of us, we will be discussing at two o'clock. But I was a little surprised when I looked at the amount of funds that this county commission has been given, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the last five years for these projects, and that does not include the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which a hundred twenty-five was from the city and the county for a build-out at Hazel's House of Hope, and we also gave two hundred thousand separate to health rate, and we also have given forty thousand dollars a year at a health rate for five years, so that's almost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have been contributing, and I hate to say, James is right, we're still at the same spot we were five years ago. So we are working on trying to bring everyone together and cooperate. With that being said, I have something exciting to say about that. Mike Lee from Kia, Freedom Kia, contacted a small group of us and nonprofits, and we're meeting, as it is, we wrote, a small group of nonprofits are meeting with several business community members to develop a plan to increase collaboration and efficiency of, of Mon County Human Service nonprofits. And the first goal we had was, we disseminated information for what all the churches do downtown. So we have a list out to there, everything from the different food, the different places they can go for different options that the churches are doing. That we have sent out. The second thing is going to come out later this week, which will be a list of all the Thanksgiving and Christmas meals, toys, events that people can apply for. So we're trying to consolidate all this information, and we're going to have them on little, what I call cheat sheets, to give to the police, to give to the people, so if they see someone, they can show a family or someone like that. The third step, and this is the big one, we're going to try and do, is we're trying to have a summit in January of all the nonprofits, businesses, and funded, because in January, and the county commission knows, that is when the county commission, the city council, and other groups get the applications for funding. And what usually happens is, people come now and ask for funds, and we need to do this way before. So our goal is to have a summit to consult, well, to explain what every nonprofit is doing, because there's a lot of overlapping, and we need to consolidate and be more efficient. So that is our goal, and that is what, and I will say, the, the two county commissioners have been very supportive of me allowing this to go through, and they've been great behind it, so I want to thank them, and we are actually now coming with some actual solutions. And to me, you get some small wins first, and then go for the ultimate, which is this summit and resolving issues. So with that, I will ask for.